All right, it is 4:01, so we will get started tonight with our Christian County Board, Board of Trustees Special Meeting Open Session. Thank you everyone for your participation, especially on the day and time of our meeting, third week in a row. So greatly appreciated. I think tonight we will have more of a structured conversation with the specific next step. So appreciate everyone's feedback prior and, you know, more open dialogue. And tonight I think we'll get back to our more structure with Robert's rules and following through the agenda to make sure we're on cask. And if we need to call an order or move to votes, I'm certainly open to that. So we want to go ahead and get started with our pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will begin with tonight's agenda items. I think we've got four subbullets under the executive director search process. So as Tori just mentioned, we do have some handouts in the packet and then as well as we will continue to use our real-time technology to make edits and revisions for that. So appreciate that accommodation. I know we've got a lot of work going on this week. So let's go ahead and start in with the timeline. Excuse me, I think this is the second, the first page of the packet beyond the agenda. Trustee Garrity, would you like to start discussion?
Yeah, I would move that we do the job description and feedback earlier in the agenda because we can't really talk about timelines and things until we finalize the job description and incorporate the lawyer's suggestions and an additional suggestion of clarification that I had.
Sure.
So we can take that first.
Yeah, so you are moving to reorder the same agenda items that we have currently?
Yes, ma'am.
Job description first?
Yes.
Any others that need to go, or is that the one that just needs to be above the others?
It is that one.
All right. Somebody want to reach out again? Uh, no, sorry, we were waiting for John to confirm that that was the only change you wanted to.
Yeah, I just.
Okay, so just job description.
I've moved that we move job description to the top of the agenda list.
Perfect. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we can move to roll call vote. Trustee Brazil?
Aye.
Trustee Garrity?
Aye.
Trustee Hagan?
Aye.
Trustee Hernandez de Caro? All right, motion carries. So thank you, John. We will reorder and start with the job description. I know the feedback from Mr. Petrowski is the very last page of the packet, I'm sorry, second to last page. And then we also have the very last page, which was those relevant excerpts from the Missouri law. So, Trustee Garrity, would you like to begin that discussion?
Sure, I think, do you have that up?
Yep.
I have it for me. I said that'll link to everybody. I have incorporated Robert's suggestions. I don't have any huge problems with them. They're only one. No, I don't have any problems with any of them. I've added his comments as green, his suggested deletions as strikeouts in red. And I've added his statute requirement that the executive director attend state library meetings and district library institute meetings charged against the county library fund. I've added it to the leadership section. It seemed appropriate to have it there. And then down in educational experience requirements, we had or related field. I think it's appropriate with all the discussion we had on practical business experience and leadership in business to add a master's in business administration or related field preferred.
In addition to master's degree in library science?
Or, it's an or statement.
Yes, so in addition to master's degree in library science?
She doesn't have this, John, and it's not in the packet. This is what I just put it up here.
My apologies.
No, yeah.
Yes, I see that. Thank you.
May I ask a point of clarification on that? So would we be comfortable saying master's degree in library sciences or related fields or master's in business administration or related fields? Is that overly redundant?
Or how about, you know, we had talked about maybe how, you know, it would be, we would be open to also seeing value in people that have masters in nonprofit management. And that way we list, we cast the weapon that applied and maybe encourage someone who has a background in that area in the nonprofit world.
Like an MPA?
What's that?
Like an MPA?
Yes.
To me, wouldn't that not be included in related field preferred?
I guess maybe that's the point of clarification is how.
I would put a master's degree in library science comma, master's degree in business administration comma, or related field.
Then.
Preferred. I would think that would open the door to anything.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Can we start just one at a time? Pick one place where we're gonna, because we're gonna put that into the main.
Okay.
Process-wise. So do you want to start with his first addition here?
Yeah, let's, why don't we take them in bulk? Does anybody have any issues with Robert's suggestions? There's a few there. There's an addition of a bullet under, I put it in leadership. And then there's some deletions and adds that I put in there. I can read them again.
Well, we're gonna put them into, so this is the, this is the one here, the final one, that we sent to the lawyer. So I will in real-time insert it here. So you want to add reports from time to time to the board of trustees, right? So.
That was Robert's suggestion.
And. Okay, so does this look correct to you in the real one here? And reports from time to time to the board of trustees? Does that look correct? And then delete the law? Is that correct?
What are you deleting?
The law part, you have this deleted here?
Oh, hyperlink to the statute, yeah.
Is he deleting the line or is he deleting the hyperlink?
We're deleting the entire line.
Remove the link text. Okay, thank you. Everyone wants to do that one too? Okay. Okay, so those two are in. So here at the beginning it now says the ED is the chief executive and administrative officer of the library and reports from time to time to the board of trustees. And then there's no hyperlink or line with a hyperlink.
Okay, what about his suggestion before that? Where does that come in? The, I would suggest removing and is accountable to the board of trustees and serves at their pleasure. That's the first sentence.
Yes, that's how.
That's what I'm.
Oh, it's replaced. It's here, so the ED is the chief.
Thank you.
Yep, okay, so those two are in. What's next on? The attend state library meeting bullet point?
Yes, under leadership, attend state library meetings and district library institute meetings charged against the library, county library fund.
I'll put it here and then if anyone has wording suggestions or whatever, just say them and then you can all agree. So this is what John says?
No, that's what the lawyer says. Actually, it's in statute, so I don't know how we would not do it anyway, but.
It's good to have it stated, clarified.
Yeah, no, he wants it in there. They should expect that they have to do it.
Yeah.
So that's fine.
Sounds good.
Okay.
More meetings.
Okay, so no changes to that wording? And then finally, sorry, down to that last one, to add, if you're adding things besides just related field.
And I had suggested, can you get there? After library science.
Here we go.
Under education.
Or comma, masters of, what had you written there?
Business administration.
Business administration.
Can I just put master's degree in library science, business administration?
And/or related field preferred?
And did Mary want nonprofit administration or no one wants that?
Public administration?
Public administration.
Or is that included? Okay.
I'll put it and then you decide.
Yeah, whether that is, and/or related, and/or related field preferred. That'd be comma, and/or, after public administration, comma.
I think you could just say or would mean.
Yeah, I think the or is.
Here, I'll highlight this part so you can look closer.
Is there any way you can enlarge that? Because I'm having a really hard time reading it from here.
It's pretty large, but I will try. I'll make it really large for me, so I will.
That was from last week. And then it was kind of like telling me to look away, look away, look away until all the changes were made.
Because of the glare. Oh, this is a much better seat concerning the glare.
You just needed me for another.
Yeah, right here it's bad.
Yeah, this is very bad.
Oh, it was right in the middle for us. For Echo and Mary sitting.
Yep, these are the hot seats in one of those lights.
So that's the addition. Do you want all, both, all three of those things?
That looks good. That looks fine to me. That looks good. Next item, can you please, the 10 years and then with five years are the same thought? They should not be separate bullets, I don't think is how it should be.
So that was something.
Or sub-bullet or continuation bullet would be my suggestion.
Hold on just a second. Sorry, when it's giant like this, which I do all the time because I'm also blind.
What if we deleted the parentheses and put it all in the same, like you said, on the same line? Yeah, I feel like it either needs to be a sub-bullet to indicate it's a portion of the 10, or I would just do it as a continuation of the same sentence. 10 years' experience with, yeah, there we go.
Perfect.
Yep. And then I had a question on the library administration to ensure from our conversation last week that that would be public library administration, school library, research library. I know we have MU library staff in our area, that sort of thing. I want to confirm that as the definition of library administration would be professionals from any of those capacities.
Tori, can I ask what copy you're working off of because I can't find it?
Yeah, this is not shared with everyone. This is the one after Mary put in her comments and the one that is closed because the lawyer so that everybody can't edit it at once because we're afraid it'll, too many cooks in the kitchen, you know?
Understand, but I should be able to view it.
Oh, it's in your packet.
I want to see the document. I don't want the packet. I want to see the document.
I mean, it's right, I don't understand what you're saying. It's right here.
If I go into the packet, it's PDF.
Right. And it's in your printed packet right there, I'm saying you can look.
Right, I want the Google doc, please.
Okay.
Executive Director job description.
It's in your, if you're in your Google Drive, I just put it in your folder, in your, the John folder for revisions, where you had your other one.
Okay, is this one you're actively working on now?
Yes.
Is it a copy of it or is it?
It's a copy so that we don't accidentally both edit at the same time.
I guess, I guess you didn't understand what I'm saying. I want to see the document that you're actually working on so I can see the edits you're making as you're making them.
Okay.
Sorry, maybe I wasn't clear.
Okay.
Did you send me the link?
Sure. Sorry, misunderstood.
So on that 10 years, five years thing, I think you just pulled the five years up to the 10 years line. It's a continuation of the same sentence. There we go, perfect. So I believe we've incorporated Robert's suggestions. John, I think we've discussed your suggestion or your placement of suggestions.
And where did we include the relevant excerpts from the Missouri law?
Those are there for your reference since the lawyer referenced them.
That's what Robert was referencing.
Okay, so that, okay.
To make sure why.
So it doesn't have to be spelled out in there?
No.
They're just referred to, okay.
And those excerpts I gave you last week, it didn't have that other one about attending meetings because that isn't like required. I mean, it's required that you let them do that, but not to hire them.
Since it was like in Robert's comments, the one, make sure you could look at the specific details.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion on Robert's feedback around job description on our agenda? Not on your motion?
I move to accept the Christian County Library Executive Director job description as now updated.
Thank you, Janice. Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we can go to a roll call vote. Trustee Brazil?
Aye.
Trustee Garrity?
Aye.
Trustee Hagan?
Aye.
Trustee Hernandez de Caro? Motion carries. All right, so the next item on the agenda is still within our executive director search process now, the timeline, which takes us to the second page of the packet. So, Trustee Garrity, would you like to begin that discussion?
All right. So I reviewed the process that we had the last time and it seemed a little onerous and protracted. I think we can move faster. I don't think we need three rounds. This is pretty much abbreviated. I think the only administrative staff support we need is setting up meetings, coordinating emails. I would love to see the email applications copied into, like we did with the lawyer, copied into a shared box. I think we can do that, set up an email box for that.
It's a bambi question.
Yeah.
Similar as what we did with the lawyers. And then we have a generic email that we can all see those applications. That's not in this list, but I think that needs to get a, set up. If there's anything missing here in the preparation for the recruitment, the other thing that I really think is needed and it's not in here, I thought the commissioners did a decent job of asking some preliminary questions before they were interviewed. I would like to settle on like five questions or something like that, to where they submit their resume and answer five questions. And then we can review that to decide who we want to bring in for interviews. I think that's a solid way of doing that. I just haven't landed on five questions. I mean, I have an idea on what I want to do, but if that works for you all for round one, we post the finalized JD, we ask for applications, and if someone wants to apply, they fill out the questionnaire. We don't have a questionnaire, that's the problem.
And to add to that commentary, Janice, I think you're the only one who hasn't been through the hiring process, the appointment process with the county commissioners. So do you know what John is describing in that way?
No, I don't, because I don't recall the county commissioners being any part of it whatsoever.
Yeah, I know.
We were on COVID, we were doing most of it FaceTime or, or, but I was only aware of my other board members. I apologize.
I don't know that it's currently publicly posted on the commissioner's site because we're currently not.
It is.
It is?
Yeah, it is.
Tori, would you be comfortable navigating to the county commissioners' website as we continue discussion and then we could pull up to make sure that Janice is giving context, I know if we don't know what we're talking about?
Yeah, and I'm curious, why would they be involved with it, John?
They're not.
It's just like, that would be.
I think John's using it as a reference example.
We have to reword the questions because.
Oh, absolutely. Questions wouldn't be the same.
We're looking for what trustees and we're looking for executive directors.
Correct, correct.
Are you talking about the application?
The application.
So John's saying that the commissioners use an application, meaning they're asking the candidates to please fill out these questions in addition to submitting their resume for consideration. And from those two pieces of information, then we would have some basics beyond just, otherwise we all have resumes. So this is following suit from how our commissioners work with their appointment processes to gather some basic information that we want that's publicly available for anyone to see and then pair that with requesting resume and as part of the application submitted. So I just wanted you to see that, that was helpful reference to say things like, not these questions specifically, but.
So these would not be the round one interview questions? These would be questions attached to the application? So other than giving their resume, they would answer some of these?
This is the application. So you're getting their personal information up top, I believe.
I think it gives you like their name, their email, why are they interested in applying for a position? So we would have a similar five questions potentially.
Don't we have a CCL application they have to do? We do have one already that's.
For executive director.
We don't, we didn't put the entire, because it repeated a lot of what might be on there. But yes, we have an application that already collects the general information, like you said, the name, address, email, and we can add the questions so that they can just type them in right there if you'd like.
The only complication with doing that is you can't, I would think you couldn't post until you decide on those questions.
Yes, that's true.
So that would delay the posting more for you to come up with questions.
Because I wonder if we just send those questions to our initial top five candidates once the application is received?
Well, if you, we had 13 candidates initially last time, seeing how they would, if you're offering questions, at some point you have to take it from the 13 down to the five. And if these questions added to their resume, you know, when they apply for the job, might make that sorting process much quicker because you could get a lot about their personality on the answers to those questions. And then when you take like maybe from the 13 down to seven or five, then you go for the next round of more intense questions down to your two or three candidates. I could see the questions being part of the application as being helpful in the sorting process from the very beginning.
This was the last time one. You don't have to do it like that at all.
Seeing like on the, that says the first round written applications, email tapkins with staff with a deadline to respond. I would say the deadline for application is such and to have those initial written questions as part of that and just make that the original first deadline, that would make sense to me and honestly would simplify the process.
What we could do is, is the application that you have currently generic enough that we could just use that to collect their contact information and have them submit a resume?
Yes.
Let's just do that. It gets us up and running quick. So we'll collect their contact information. Any, we're not going to be asking questions. We're going to collect their resume and their intent to, to apply for the position.
Can we do a resume and a cover letter? Because it's, you can get a little bit more.
Can you add that?
Mm-hmm.
Request a cover letter.
And last time it was a resume, cover letter, and three references, but you.
I would appreciate having the references. I think they're very important to, if you want to check, because you may have two people who seem very equal, but what you hear and to feel out how the people work with them, felt with what we're requiring, I think the references might come in handy.
My concern with references is people only put down individuals sometimes who are only going to say good things about them. Sometimes it's difficult to get an accurate assessment.
I agree with you, but I'd still like them to have to provide it.
Yeah, I think it's helpful because you can go too deep. If the references aren't from any current or recent employer, that says a lot.
Yeah.
So I mean, you can tell a lot.
And are we, would we be asking for a reference letter? That's very different than references available upon our request. Are we asking for a proactive, I, you have to write me a reference letter? And again, we need to have a conversation on the legality of if we're going to call references and check that, there's hiring considerations there. I know for the corporate job.
There's really nothing you can do when you're checking, you can call and go, you can verify their.
Verify employment, exactly. That's a different thing entirely than a.
HR won't tell you anything.
Than a written, you know, voucher of character, if you will, or I just want to clarify because in a corporate reality, we don't usually call references. Or we just beyond verification of employment. And so I want to say, are we asking for a reference in the sense of I've worked with Echo, this is my experience? Are we asking for phone numbers we could call to verify employment? What is it we're asking for?
That's a great idea.
To get a letter.
Because then people can be more personal.
I feel like I've seen that more in community roles. When I've served on other boards, I was asked for a letter of my recommendation for service to my community. And it could have been from a church member, it could have been from someone.
That's part of how we apply to be a trustee.
We can still verify past employment anyway.
Yeah, that's sort of implied.
Do you want those with the initial application or just at the end?
It's a tough one because they're going to have to go get it and then the person's going to have to write it, so it's going to have probably a week.
I'd say not with the initial application, because I think that's, that's making it the initial application.
It's creating a tending.
Yeah, it's making it too odious and it's going to scare people away.
Well, Nada, if we have 13, I keep using 13 applicants, we may just look at them and automatically go with a few of them and we don't even need the extra information because we'll just know from what we've written whether they're really valid or not.
If you, if they require to list references from past employment, like I know my boss from my last employer told me he would give me a reference. So he's not in HR, so he would do it, he can do it. So I think if they give references, personal references of people that they worked for or with, that's good. I think that's good.
Okay.
We're not going to be able to get much from HR at these companies, they're just not going to.
Correct. Where would we list this request if it's not already in the CCL?
Just, we're going to add it to the application list, three references from recent previous employer with phone number, email.
Would that be on the second round?
Okay.
As part of application.
Are we still on timeline or are we on interview process?
If we're wanting to keep this automated and the software that we use, collecting the information like the resume, references, cover letters if you want it, and their general information, we can't keep sending that out. So we don't want to go to an extra round and then ask for that unless you're going to just send out a blast email or something. Because I can't, once they've applied for the job, I can't kick it back to them and ask for more information.
No, I'm with you. It should be all first go-round. It should, let's get everything we can in the first go-round.
And unless you're with the five questions to, if you send it out not with the original application.
We're not going to do five questions.
You're not going to do it at all.
No, we're not doing it. At least I don't think. Does anybody want to send questions to the application? I think we'll get to that when we interview.
Echo, as a point of clarification, just for the minute, is this the timeline we're discussing or are we discussing the process?
Both.
Both.
To me, are we, you're going to clarify how many rounds right now? Is that what you're doing?
The rounds, I think, are inclusive of the process if I'm not mistaken, John.
Yeah, so I'll put that under process if that's okay. So the first round is application, I'm hearing? And you are asking Mary to have the CCL basic information?
So we've done the first bullet on this process, correct?
So we're on this, so review and finalize job description, we've done that. Finalize application questionnaire, we're not, we, we're going to use the generic CCL, right?
So our, when we post a job, just to clarify, so I don't post something wrong, we put what we require, you know, an email address, address, phone number, the minimum requirements. But then we include a lot of other things that they can add if they want, their LinkedIn address, just things like that. They can add additional information if they want. Do you want me to turn that off or leave it on? Because I can make some, certain things required and other things optional.
Is it possible for us to see what that application looks like and what the options are and which boxes we want to check?
I would have to bring it in to the next. I would have to bring it to the next meeting. I can't do it right here.
That would be helpful because do we have current, any current openings posted? It would show it that way.
Well, why would we, I don't think we need to turn anything off. Why wouldn't we want to collect all the information we can?
And we, we do. We leave everything on just because. And yeah, because all they do is check a box and it opens a little line for them to add their LinkedIn profile or their, you know, Instagram or whatever they want to add. And it's all very standard. There's nothing weird, you know, no, no additional little questions. It's just more geographic information.
Right, just turn it all on. The only thing that isn't, is the with references. So you're going to have to add that, right? If they want to provide personal professional work references from recent employers.
There is an option to upload references and I would just make it required.
Okay.
I'm just trying to be helpful. I found at bamboohr.com, there's a, there's a link that you could find.
But I think it's, it's different for, will it change jobs and jobs?
I just found one that might be helpful, that kind of.
It's on bamboo. When you post it, what platforms are you posting on?
Normally we post to Indeed and. Our website. And then those are the ones that automatically come out of Bamboo. Indeed, we might get some and LinkedIn, if we want to post it there, we can. I think at the last time, you would know better than I, would we also posted it on professional organizations.
Yes.
Library executive.
And that helped just reach a little further. We need to get a diverse.
Is it a big deal cost to put it?
So Indeed's free because we have an agreement with, with Bamboo and, and Indeed. I think LinkedIn has a free version, which is probably what we want to use. We don't need their extra, you know, bumping it up against other jobs or anything. But if it would be, we'd have to come up with a budget for anything else.
Although there is a budget line item for job postings generally, right, like in HR.
Yes.
So the, I mean, it's already anticipated that this year we'll be spending money on job postings. It wouldn't have to be necessarily a zone.
I would have to look at that line item. I might have a budget in front of me.
Yeah.
But this might exceed that if we, because normally we only post on Indeed, their lower level jobs. So we only post them on the free sites because we get enough applications.
Since we're looking for the level of expertise either in, in business and library science in, I'm sorry. I don't remember how Mary, the public administration. I would think we would want to expand that a little bit.
We need to have.
Do the professional websites.
And I wasn't, with the other process, I'm not sure where we posted.
We didn't have a website like that, so, but yeah.
No, I mean, like.
We'd have to look back. I don't know. Yeah, maybe.
I'm not sure. I'm not sure where you looked at it. You'd have to look at the, at the budget for the last time.
See if there's any additional stuff we could do after. I mean, our normal site is just LinkedIn, you know, those things. We've been getting quite a lot of results from those recently. We didn't have that last time. Your Bamboo HR, it definitely does like put the call out wider for us.
Yeah, which I'm talking about. Like if you're, we were hiring accountants, we would take out an ad with the AICPA, the professional organization. That's what we're referring to.
Okay. So. Okay, so if I have CCL information, oh, and this is what. Aline has said, here's, here's a communications thing, just so you can see how the job looks. And link to this job, the location, the compensation, entry level. And then I'm assuming you wanted us to press this. So first name, last name, resume. And references and.
Make references required to upload references.
Yeah.
Do you want a cover letter required or?
Yes.
How many references?
Three, at least three.
Reference letters or just contacts?
Sorry to belabor that point.
I, I'm not sure that I can edit what it asks for.
What does it ask for?
I think it says just references and it's an upload, so it, it asks for a file, I believe.
That's pretty stupid. Yeah, I have a written reference from a prior employer that I would upload if I were applying for it.
And see some of these.
Normally if you're applying for a position of this caliber, you'll need at least three references.
But if they give you phone numbers, then last time, the way the trustees avoided having a quorum is they divided those up. And each one took one reference and then there was a meeting to discuss what the references told them. I know it's a slightly different professional climate than it was even in 2021. But then it was a call up, talk to them, take notes, come back and talk through what they, what they reported about that person.
We each had three people we called.
Yep. But that was at the very last stage of the process. You guys did that so that you didn't waste time doing that for every applicant just your final.
They provide references and as we call the numbers and they get down to a more serious group, that that would be an appropriate time to make calls and speak to people. Or we've got a lot of information when we, when we spoke to, when we spoke on the phone with people, we've had quite a lot of information.
So what I heard is a resume that they write, our CCL application, a cover letter. And then we're going to make it mandatory that they upload a reference list.
With at least three references, right? Or maybe we can't say that.
We may not be able to restrict that, it sounds like.
Something uploaded?
Something uploaded and if you need to, if you can, if it's forward, you can also remind them in the first interview, please come with an updated reference list to the first interview. And that way you can get that from them at the second round or first round.
They'll always see it and know it's coming.
Yes, if they, say they only have a phone number and not email address, you can say, please update this with your email and the email's back.
Good idea.
Because if there is no.
And I can make, I can make email required. So that way, and, and phone number, that way you don't have to.
Right.
Right. We, we have to have the references before the first interview. Otherwise if you're not going to, it's meaningless once we start interviewing, we don't have time to check them. So we're going to have that first. So I am. We're going to use the standard questionnaire with references, cover letter. And three, and three references or whatever you, whatever you can get us from your form. I don't want to rewrite the code for that.
Oh, are you changing that? That's great.
Is the fourth bullet just a statement that, that we will have an application deadline that is six weeks from the date of post slide?
Is that like the first look, as you call it, six weeks after posting?
First consideration date perhaps. That's what language we usually use for.
Didn't they vote on this?
We voted on the amount of time we would allow in the window before we would regroup and have a conversation again about potentially additional budgetary considerations versus hiring support or recruitment.
And that was eight weeks, I think.
Yeah, eight weeks from the day of posting.
Right.
That would be when we would meet again potentially. So there would be a two week window if we're saying the application deadline is that.
Is six weeks like the standard time to keep a post like this up?
Yeah, it's pretty standard to have about that much time to allow candidates to think about it or even gather references.
Is there a way for you to get us a pre-production link so that we can act as if we're a candidate and get onto it without posting it?
Along, like to try it out?
As soon as I save it, it goes to our website and goes out to Indeed, so.
Okay.
I mean, I can send you screenshots. I could do that. I can send you screenshots of what it looks like.
Okay.
That way you can't, you won't be able to go in there and try to.
And can you find out?
But if she's not, I mean, are you saying you want to approve it before she sends it out? Because again, we'd have to bring it to another meeting agenda.
No, I, I think we need to just keep moving. I, I do want to see about adding LinkedIn as a.
It's already there.
Yeah, do you want it to be required? You want me to make it required?
Yes. No, but I also want.
I'm not sure everybody's going to have a LinkedIn.
John, are you asking to post it on LinkedIn or are you asking for a candidate has to have a LinkedIn profile in order to apply for this job?
I don't think they have to have a LinkedIn account, but it would be helpful. I do want to see it posted or LinkedIn.
Because they will be able to submit, Mary, will they, will the application be acceptable if they leave those blanks? If those, those, I guess, fields blank?
I can, I can make them required or optional. So the ones that are required, it won't let them save. Except I don't have as much control when we go to an outside site. So if they apply on our website, if they click on a link like we, we've advertised on, that works. But if they go on Indeed, I lose control over it because Indeed takes it over. And then if they leave something blank, they could still save it and it sends it to us. But in that case, I mean, we get that happen every once in a while, but we, you know, we just delete them or archive them. I mean, we don't actually delete the whole thing, but we don't consider incomplete applications. Even for lower positions, we don't.
And to that point, we're just, she's just supposed to post it, right? There's no, or do you want her to come?
I want to just quickly clarify because there was a request for screenshots. And I think that implies that we would need to get approval before moving forward. If you're requesting us to send you guys screenshots.
I would say just.
Oh, you don't need to.
Yeah, I would say get posted.
We have several positions currently on the website as well, so you're welcome to browse through those and see if you like the look of them.
And that's what Aline pointed out. Thank you.
Yeah, we, we got to get this thing posted.
Just don't worry about stuff that's not on there because these are lower level positions. And there's a good chance some of the information I've just taken off. Because we don't require all that stuff for a part-time person. Yeah.
Those kinds of things because it's included in the application already in some, in a smaller.
So since we're, we're in consensus on the job description. And do we need to have a vote to be in consensus of the information Mary set out? Or is this just something we can agree upon? Do we need a motion?
I'm, I'm not sure.
I don't know. I mean, I can write it in the minutes as long, here's what I had wrapped down, that the application will include the following. A C, the CCL application information that you've seen in the meeting, a resume, a cover letter and three references. Is that correct? And that, and that Mary should post it Monday.
So if you guys wouldn't mind, it would help me if I could just get a list of everywhere you want to post it.
Okay.
So our website, obviously Indeed, LinkedIn. So if there's any others, I would need you to tell me where we go.
Sort of like the lawyer search, if you knew people are placed in it. And obviously, once the link exists, you can send it wherever.
Yeah, I think we, we're comfortable to start with Indeed, the Christian County website and LinkedIn. Begin there and then spread the good word.
Yeah, I think LinkedIn is, you're going to hit a much broader professional audience.
You're going to get more professional.
Yeah, absolutely.
We also usually for administrative or higher, post them to like library job boards. So if that's somewhere else we can post.
I would think that would be appropriate. How much cost is involved with that?
I'm not sure.
A lot of them are free, but we could see.
And if they aren't, I think it's pretty minor cost that could be absorbed by the current like budget line. Is that right, Mary?
If you want us to burn ones that have cost, we could just post them to the free ones.
What are some of the associations that you would?
Missouri Library Association for anyone in Missouri looking for library jobs. We can post the Public Library Association. They could do the American Library Association, the School Library Association. Missouri Associate of School Librarians specifically. But the, like professional associations like that are typical for administrative or higher positions to be posted to.
I would like that included. I'd like to not incur a lot of cost with it, but I would love to that. I think it's important. Our first line says Master of Library Science and the, and Business and then Public Administration. So I think by hitting these different groups, it would be more inclusive.
I don't have a problem with it as long as there's no additional cost.
Agreed.
And you don't need to seek further approval either, right? To me, it doesn't cost us anything.
I, I think I'll, we will probably appreciate everyone's efforts if there's others that are identified along the way that have a free job board posting. I know I remember, I remember of another one that you didn't name that I can send you. And again, it's free, so if it's.
But whatever posting you, you put it on, whatever post, it should point back to our system so that they're all.
Of course, yeah.
Definitely, of course, definitely.
So when are we posting?
Is there any unanswered questions before we post?
Yes, we would need to decide a salary that we're going to be posting it at salary range. So if you would like, that's another line in the agenda. So I'm not sure if you want to pause and then move forward.
Well, I, my question would be a point of clarification, I guess, on this discussion. Are we comfortable moving past the agenda item of the hiring process and the timeline? Have we answered sufficient questions? Do we need to continue the rest of this? Or obviously I'm sensitive to the idea we post now and figure the rest out later.
Well, we can get to the, I, for minutes, it would be nice if you're going to talk about how many rounds and decide that in the process, I feel like, right? Because basically right now for process, I have application and post. And, and that post is post as soon as Mary's able to, I'm assuming? Or do you have a date that you think we're able to do?
Um, it would be next week for sure because we're end of the week here. But it would take some time. Mary, for what, what's, do you, what are you comfortable with by a deadline as far as when we can get it posted on your end?
I can have it done before we send out the packet. I mean, if, assuming they have a meeting, so I'll just say Thursday. So I can definitely have it posted by Thursday. It'll probably be sooner than that, but we also have three other jobs open that we're getting ready to close because we found candidates and I'll have to onboard them and all, so.
So that's by the end of the day on the sixth, if not the fourth, but, okay.
My only other question is what is required for us to set up the new generic email and the Google Drive folders? Because we'd have to have the generic email in place as a part of the application process, correct?
I will need to talk to Eve, our IT director, and edit up our email address. And then Tori or I will need to set up the Google folder and organize that for you and send it to you. So that would probably be part of the trustees folder that you already have access to. And there'll just be a subfolder for applications. And then most likely, the best way of doing that is just to have a folder inside of that for each applicant with all of their information and each of those subfolders. Or having access to the Bamboo account, of course, that would be Mary.
I'll be able to export it and put it all in there. Let's keep it all in one place.
Yeah, so we maybe then not need the.
I just made one, application. It's in your trustee's search.
Good job, Tori. So Mary will be able to export all of the applicants into that folder.
Need an email.
So you, yeah.
Sounds like it's a Bamboo export in one folder and we'll all immediately have access to it.
So in 2021, we didn't use Bamboo. It was kind of, it's still a DIY process, like email us and we put them in a folder.
Is there another need for email, John, that we're overlooking?
Is there what?
Another need for a generic email? It sounds like from the process prior, we used to use email.
No, I think if Bamboo does that, then we don't need that.
It only compiles it very well.
Yeah, and if you want, if you want, it'll even automatically send a generic, thank you for applying, we'll be getting back to you. Or, you know, we'll be reviewing your resume. It's just a generic, thank you for your resume and we got it.
Let someone know that thanks, gosh.
After the conversation with Bamboo, it's going to get, it's going to get to the second level of communication. You're probably still going to want that email unless you already have like an HR email that you use. The problem is the board will be excluded from that. That's what I have.
Oh, it's just an email on all it says is we got your resume, thank you.
From Bamboo, but I'm saying second round of communication, we invite you to come and interview, blah, 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 blah. That has to come from an email, not from Bamboo.
Or unless you're having somebody call to arrange the.
Do you send that out from Bamboo for the second?
It depends, it depends on how you're wanting to coordinate the interviews. So if Bamboo is, you're able to message them directly on Bamboo. It, I'm unsure about the board's forum and then setting up actual interviews. So Tori, how would that work with applications? Because.
So last time we had one person within the library and that person was me, but it could be Mary who.
So the last time it was a library staff member who coordinated the interview at times and set up the dates.
So all the applicants.
So that it could be coordinated by one person in the library because having multiple members of the board or even one member of the board making those decisions could get a little dicey and tricky.
So basically what happened is all the applications were brought to a meeting. The board decided which ones they wanted to send, what their next round, whatever your next round is, you guys decide. And then authorize that person to send that out. And they did and I would, so that there was not the possibility of a conversation. I usually BCC'd the trustees' emails so you could all see the email that I sent to the candidates. I usually BCC'd the trustee's emails so you could all see the email that I sent to the candidates. That now the reply then would only come to me, but then at the next meeting, I would bring all the replies or put them in the folder. You guys would review those in another meeting to figure out who goes on to the next, does that make sense, to the next round? And for scheduling, it was just kind of like I do for, again, sorry, Mary, that we haven't done your orientation yet, but kind of like, there's an orientation coming up, you know, there's a, congratulations, you've made the next round. You know, we'll be in touch on these days. And I would get all the trustee's schedules and figure out a time when everyone could get together, that kind of thing. It's a lot of scheduling.
And it's, it sounds like a lot of work, but I like the idea of it being fumbled to one place, one person.
Yeah, and Dana can decide that.
You're reporting to us and then we're giving you the feedback to send out. To me, that sounds efficient.
That could be a list as well, like just, okay, these are the five candidates that we'd like to have interviews with. These are the available times and days, please coordinate meetings, either Zoom or in person. So yeah, I think all the applications going to the application folder, you would have until first consideration date. You would all choose a date that you were all going to review them independently. Like, we're all gonna look at this and then we're all gonna get together at the meeting to discuss and look at them further. And then from there, you would need to give, me, give me a directive, like, hey, here's the applicants that we want to interview. And here are our available dates. Please reach out to the candidates and, or I would ask Tori, help me, or Tori, I need you to do this. And then we would get those set up for you. Makes sense.
Yeah.
So we have a post deadline goal of Thursday, the sixth. Do we need any further discussion beyond what Dana was just explaining?
When you post, you have to give a salary range? In Bamboo, you do?
Yes.
Do we have a salary range?
Well, we're gonna get, that's next one.
Next. I'm curious if we need to, are we making any votes on the newly condensed process? I feel like that.
Are there a number, are you gonna decide tonight how many rounds? Or how that's gonna work? Like, back to the, are you gonna send written questions as a first round and then meet to eliminate people? Are you going to? Do you know what I mean? Will there be a Zoom, like a Zoom meeting?
Yeah, would you like to go over the details of, you know, the process of the interviews?
And you don't have to do that today.
Or we could just say that we're gonna get posted, this is the plan for the first interview, and then meet at a later time to discuss.
Yeah, put that on another agenda.
Personally, in the effort of time efficiency and getting this job posted, I would like to review the salary, get the job description complete, and get that thing posted. I, I feel once it's posted, obviously, we have a little bit of time to decide what our next few rounds will be. The candidates aren't needing that information when they send in their application.
And you'll have some Greeks. You'll have plenty of time.
Yeah.
Okay. You can do a motion if you want, but you don't have to.
Motion for the approval of this condensed hiring process because it is updated and revised from the prior, so. Trustee Gary, are you comfortable making that motion?
I'm comfortable, I second that motion.
Yeah, you're making that.
I move that we accept this abbreviated hiring process and get this thing posted as we discussed.
Now, are we talking about your document here, John? Or are we just talking about the?
What we just discussed.
What we just discussed, right?
Yes, what we just discussed.
Gotcha.
We added things to this document and you took notes, I hope. I took notes as well.
Yes, but I wasn't putting them in your document.
No, you don't need to.
Gotcha.
But they should be added to a final draft.
So post by February 6th for at least six weeks, correct?
It's gonna be posted February 6th, right?
February 6th, uh huh, so.
And we're gonna post it on Indeed, LinkedIn, our own website.
Everywhere.
Everywhere that's free.
So that would make first consideration date Thursday, March 20th. Friday, March 21st may be easiest. And then everyone has the weekend to just to review. Up to you, of course, but six weeks from Thursday would be March 20th.
So I've heard a motion for trustee Garrity to approve this hiring process, condensed hiring process as discussed today with those considerations. Is there a second on that motion?
I have a question.
Yes, please. We're approving the entire document or just the first part, the preparation and recruitment section?
So my understanding was that we weren't using this document, these are John's notes, but that what I was gonna put in the minutes was that the application will include the things that you discussed. We will post by February 6th for at least, for, with the final, the first consideration on Friday, March 21st, six weeks later. That's all that I have, because you didn't decide any other round. So it's not even a whole hiring process, it's just like the posting.
Yes, okay, I just wanted to be sure.
Me too, yeah, because if that's not what you want, then.
Trustee Garrity, is that, are you comfortable with that clarification that we are, your motion is to approve the process as we have discussed, not necessarily this full?
Right, that's just, you know, on my notes, it's just a preparation and improvement.
Perfect, okay.
The interviewing thing, we haven't even talked about that yet, so.
Cool.
Thank you.
And those notes were very helpful, by the way.
All right, so with John's motion is on the process as discussed tonight specifically. I have a finalized job description posting by the 6th with a six-week timeline on three free websites in addition to others that might be available that are free. With giving us then that six-week deadline would be the 20th. So that is the motion as I heard it.
That's it.
All right, a second for that motion?
Second.
Awesome. Any discussion on the motion? All right, we will move to a roll call vote. Trustee with Zoom?
Aye.
Trustee Garrity?
Aye.
Trustee Higgins?
Aye.
Trustee Hernandez de Carl. All right, motion carries. Thank you. So now I think we can move into the salary review. Thank you, team, for pulling that together. Dana, would you like to start the discussion?
I'd be happy to. So Tori, Mary, and I reached out to the Missouri State Library to request the statistics about libraries and director salaries in Missouri. We were specifically requested for public libraries with comparison to library districts of a similar size to ours. So on the document, you'll see there's five that have a slightly less population served and then four that's slightly high population served. On the document includes the neighborhood library, geography of the county or multi-county, the number of branches, total number of full-time staff, the director's salary, the director's benefit cost, also the tenure minimum education that's required that was listed, the collective tax rate, assessed valuation, operating revenue. So that just compares apples to apples a little bit, a little bit, to try to see where we're at with other libraries. In yellow highlight, that was the current pay rate of the previous executive director. The orange highlight is the current, the lowest pay rate of the current pay rate. So that's the starting wage. And the green is the highest end of the current salary range. In comparison, overall, in comparison with library districts of a similar size, we are offering a competitive pay range for an executive director, especially considering our population and tax rate. There is a concern that going above the currently listed salary range is going to put us at financial risk. There are some concerns with that. So, but if you have any questions about this document, I'm happy to answer.
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes.
Because I was not aware of the director benefits. That's substantial, you know, and that really bumps up the salary. Now, is, does this mean that the director's, like, health insurance isn't completely covered?
Yes.
And if, I think it might be helpful that, that we would add that to the job description. Because I know that, like, for us, for the person with experience, when my husband was looking for a job, we didn't realize how expensive civilian insurance is. And it made a big difference when, I just went up, I looked at the Convoy of Hope job descriptions and they make that a point to sell their, about employment at that company. Is, the wording is Convoy of Hope offers employer-paid health and dental coverage for you and your family. And that right away, I think, well, you know, although the initial number of, you know, seventy-nine thousand for a starting point may not be as high as maybe someone would like, but to know that their health insurance is covered at a hundred percent, well, that's a, that's a big savings.
Yes.
And it really is.
And I can get Mary's input on this as far as, but we offer, you know, health, dental, vision, I believe, is now just got covered, correct?
And the employee is a hundred percent covered, but family, dependent spouse are only partially covered.
Yes, and we also contribute to the MoLaggers Retirement Fund for full-time staff. So that is retirement as well, which is very appealing.
So this ninety-seven, four oh three is, what we need to do is pull the benefits out of that. People want to know what the base salary is.
Yes, that is under director salary, that's seventy-five thousand nine hundred and twenty-three.
Okay, and then when we post, we post the salary plus benefits?
I would, I would not post a dollar amount because it can be so many variations depending on their family.
This is where I'm getting to, Mary. We post the salary range, we have a target, we, you don't want to hire people low or high. You want to get them somewhere intermediate so that they can get a promotion.
Oh, no, I'm talking about benefits. The salary, we absolutely can post that.
The salary can be posted. We don't normally cover in the salary the benefits because it's usually included in the benefits package that we discuss in the interview or we, we offer it whenever that we offer them the job or posting.
So, but you have to tell them what the range is, otherwise they're not even gonna apply.
Which we can list the benefits if you'd like, what we found with, because we, we've looked at listing full amounts of what it could be. The problem is, there's so many variations of, and it could be, and the range gets so wide that it becomes not helpful.
Well, people do the math anyway. Benefits are usually twenty to thirty percent of the total package for a person anyway. It's, I just.
I guess, I guess, I'm, maybe you're not, I'm not explaining it very well. Since we pay a hundred percent of the employee and only a portion of the family, we have five different plans and it's fifteen percent, it depends. And so it could be anywhere from three hundred dollars to twenty-five hundred dollars.
So my question is, what are you gonna say to the candidate?
That we, we provide health coverage.
You provide health coverage?
We get that, we, well, when, when the executive director or when, last time, there was a packet that was included that covered the health benefits, but it was after application.
And it wasn't the first, it was after you guys did a few rounds for the final round.
It was on the final round.
Before they came.
When the benefits back.
Also, in that industry, it's very standard to have benefits like this. It's not rare at all, maybe in other industries.
Yeah, because I, I mean, I was wondering, and you know, and considering that we're, that we're casting that aside and we're trying to, you know, entice people to, or missions or to, you know, apply for this role, would it be possible to come up with language to put that out there that you will, that the library will contribute to our retirement fund? That wording that will let the person know what kind of health coverage, a summary of benefits? We're not putting numbers, we could definitely do that.
Yeah, we could do that.
That's helpful.
I guess I'm confused why we would not include that as a default on every position that we post at this library.
Are we gonna post a base salary range?
Well, the current salary range is the thirty-eight to forty-two thousand dollars, which is listed in our pay scale. When we, when we discussed last week, we were discussing if that pay scale needed to be increased. So this was the research that we did to give you information about where we land among similar-sized libraries. And also with what our benefits also provide to the current salary range. The current, again, the previous executive director was at, you know, seventy, about seventy-five thousand nine hundred and twenty-three. Even the lowest at the, the, excuse me, thirty-eight dollars an hour now is at seventy-nine thousand, which is above that.
What's messing me up is you're going from yearly salary to hourly.
Oh, that's, I apologize. We put that into the, the yellow is the lowest, thirty-eight dollars an hour, which we did calculate into seventy-nine thousand forty. The high end of the current range is forty-two dollars an hour, which is eighty-seven thousand three hundred and sixty a year. Because it's salaried, but we're an hourly, like, pay scale, so it'd be forty hours a week. We still clock in and clock out.
I understand it's computed off of a four-hour.
On the colored page, John, on the far left column, it has the hourly and then as the, as the color goes across the board goes to.
I see that. So at a forty-two dollar an hour, at two thousand hours in a year, it's eighty-four thousand dollars on the high end-ish. I think that's, I don't know. It seems a little low. It just still seems a little low.
And I would, I would vote to, for it to be a compromise of forty dollars an hour to start with. You know, they have, we have a, I apologize, I can't think of the word. It's not quarantine, but you know, there's a period of three months or six months.
Probationary?
Probationary period. You start at the lower end, thank you. You start at the lower salary, you have a probationary period, and then you can review at that time. I'm just, I don't feel.
We actually, yeah, we don't have those anymore.
Okay.
And just, when we post it, it's posted in the range of thirty-eight to forty-two dollars an hour. That's what you can hire at.
So we can offer according to what we feel that person's needs, that person's experiences.
Education, what you feel is appropriate to offer them. If you want to start at the lower range and then, if they want to, you know, give an offer back and say, can you go up higher to this? So you don't have to say that we're gonna hire someone at forty dollars an hour because the pay range already says that it's gonna be between thirty-eight dollars an hour and forty-two dollars an hour. So that gives you a little bit of wiggle room. The number is just to give you kind of the comparison of what we could offer.
I would prefer that it, I would motion that we offer the salary of between thirty-eight and forty-two dollars an hour. There is an additional benefits package that will be discussed. And, and that would be the starting salary. I, I think we really need to get the measure of the person in the position before we have to address the entire library budget and, and cut and slash to be able to offer someone more. I, I know that is our goal to be more efficient financially, I, I agree with that. But I think offering too much upfront, I, I would like a little earnestness from the applicant as, as well as, I'm sorry, I'm discussing on top of my motion.
I heard your motion that we will continue the current range, which is thirty-eight dollars.
Thirty-eight to forty-two dollars an hour.
And the current benefits package.
And the current benefits package. And I, I would believe we ought to start at that baseline. And obviously, there's, there's room for growth. But without offending the entire budget of the library, I think we need to be a bit conservative right now. And, you know, I, I just feel we need to be a bit conservative. And, and this is a gracious amount more than when the previous executive director, who, although we did choose to dismiss her, the, she did have quite a bit of experience. So I, I, I think that my motion stands. Thirty-eight to forty-two dollars an hour with benefits package for the initial salary offered.
All right, so the motion we have on the table is the current salary range, current benefits package. Is there a second?
I would like to amend that motion. And that we change the range from thirty-eight to forty-two and change it from thirty-eight to forty-five. That brings the top end up to ninety thousand, which is closer to where I think it ought to be.
Can a budget handle that?
It won't blow up our budget either, I don't think. We're gonna be without an executive director for several months.
I have severe concerns about increasing the pay rate. I'm sorry, there's, our current financial plan, I'm sorry, to echo your comments.
So I, I hear the motion on the table is a friendly amendment. Janice, do you accept the friendly amendment to your original motion?
No, I do not.
Okay, so, no friendly amendments. So we have a motion on the table. Is there a second to the thirty-eight to forty-two range with current benefits?
I'm gonna second it.
All right, is there discussion now on the motion?
And I'm just, I'm very concerned for the overall budget for the library. And I think this is where we need to start. It's already a big step up from what we were offering and what we had budgeted previously.
I guess I want to understand that, when you say it's a step up, we're, we're keeping it identical to what it is currently. I don't understand what's changing.
The previous director?
The previous director was within the range, correct? That's what's on the third hand.
They were, their salary was seventy-five thousand nine hundred.
Yep, which is in the pre-current range.
And seven, thirty-eight would be seventy-nine thousand, forty-two would be eighty-seven thousand.
Yep, so that's all in the current range.
Dana, do you mind if I talk to the numbers on the chart? So, okay, the chart is, the numbers are a little confusing because we didn't, we only had a couple of days to get info. So like Dana said, we got it from the state library. So, like Dana said, we got it from the state library and they sent us all the libraries. And this colorful chart has twenty-twenty-three numbers. So Renee, that, that yellow is Renee in twenty-twenty-three, not when she left the library.
When did she, when did she?
Oh, I apologize, I misspoke.
Yeah, so that seventy-five thousand was her in twenty-twenty-three.
What was her twenty-five thousand?
It was in this other, yep.
Was it in?
Hold on, hold on, it was, so at her annual review, you guys give her raises every year. And when she, yeah, when she left, she was making, it's in here.
Forty-five is on the third page.
Yes, forty-fifty-five, which is.
So that's, that's my clarification.
Forty-fifty-five.
We are not modifying, we are not going to have, this is currently in the range of thirty-eight to forty-two. Currently, we budgeted and approved forty-fifty-five from the previous position, it's not to apply to this.
Yes.
New person would hire at a mid-range, they might hire at the thirty-eight entry level, but from my understanding, we are hiring absolutely as is, already approved, no changes, no increase.
Right, and that twenty-twenty-five is, it was just approved by you guys in November.
So there's no.
Forty-fifty-five an hour.
What are we budgeted for in twenty-twenty-five for the?
So Renee, you're budgeted for what Renee's salary was, because we thought she'd be here, which was forty-fifty-five per hour, which is right in the middle of what the pay scale would be for, and the pay scale, it reflects a starting pay range. So that's not how much you can make total, that's how much you start at. And then you can get more at every annual evaluation is when you would do that, there's no probationary.
Okay, thank you for that update, because I, I was operating on.
Yes, that was my mistake, I could misspoke.
Mistaken facts. I would like to revise my amendment, or my motion, that the pay scale that we offer with the packet would be forty-two, forty-three dollars an hour salary range with the benefits, da-da-da-da-da.
Wait, what?
Forty, forty-three dollars an hour.
So you do want to raise it from Renee's?
I would like to, because I did not have my facts straight.
All right, so the motion on the table is to increase the current range available for this position from thirty-eight to forty-two to now forty to forty-three, including the current benefits. Correct, Trustee Brazil, do you second the amended?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Thank you. All right, discussion on the amended motion of the forty to forty-three range.
I just want to remember the current budget, the financial budget for this year, is at that forty dollars an hour. If you keep it at thirty-eight to forty-two, you do give wiggle room for somebody who maybe doesn't have as many qualifications, but you feel is still good for the position to start at thirty-eight, which would save us money in the long run, or you would keep it. We do have, you know, our budget is set for the year. Any increases in the salary, we do have to pay more into their MoLoggers, we are going to be adding an increase. We don't know what their interest is going to look like. So I would advise to try to keep it at the current pay rate as much as possible because we do have plans for paying back the bonds and for, you know, absorbing any kind of, the senior taxes, the property tax initiative that might come through next year. So like, there's things to keep in mind with the budget, so just, just to keep you in mind of that. I'm not saying what you can and can't do, but just letting you know.
Do we have open positions right now?
Yes.
How many?
We currently have one, two, three.
Three.
Three positions open right now.
I would understand, we put three, although we can put that in the next agenda, that we freeze the open positions.
We really can't freeze those positions right now, it would be very, very difficult for staffing.
Are you functioning without them now?
No, or barely, like, we have a, we have a youth services staff person who has left, who does weekly storytimes and weekly services to the community, so that would be freezing that position entirely. We have a social media communications person, that would also freeze all the services that were offered online. That would impact us severely, like, we, we should not do that.
The difference in salary that we're talking about here is about fifteen thousand dollars. In a four million dollar budget, we can't find fifteen thousand dollars.
I'm advising that we stay with the current budget as is. I'm not suggesting that we can't find the money elsewhere, but I'm just trying to be as responsibly responsible as we can. And hiring the staff that have left, to, I don't think we should stop. What, what are you suggesting, that we freeze them for like, two, three months?
Until we get a director, yeah.
I think another consideration in this conversation is the longer we are without a director, we're saving ourselves money temporarily. And, and that would potentially catch up our, our shortcoming if we increase in twenty-twenty-five. Let's say this position is vacant eight weeks, we get excellent candidates and hire quickly, then we would have that additional money in our twenty-twenty-five budget to catch up for those payments. And then in twenty-twenty-six, we would say, okay, now we have someone, let's say, at forty-one instead of the forty-fifty-five that we've currently budgeted. So we would absolutely have to take into consideration in twenty-twenty-six, that continued increase change.
Our direction is, this is our budget, we got to make it work.
Can I go over the bond payments, do you mind?
Yeah, please, I, I, I skipped over that. Mary, I wanted to go over our financial plan for the bond payments that we're going to be doing every year. Because, because remember, when we increase the salary of anybody, like, this is not just one, like, one time, this is every year, so. Mary, please go ahead.
Okay, so just, just, I just wanted you to be aware, since you're considering increasing and making some big assumptions about what we can and can't do. The first thing is, is we budget, a zero budget, meaning our budget now, we spend all of it. And, or we can, you know, we can have a carryover, the past two years, we have not. If you look at this spreadsheet that I provided in your packet, these are the bond payments and the NIXA one. We had some reserves from the past and from the bonds that we had for Sparta and Clever that we didn't use, because we ended up saving some money on those buildings. And they have to be spent on buildings, so they allowed us to use those for the payments on the NIXA building. And we also had some land that we sold, and that was also being used to make these bond payments for the NIXA building. Those run out in twenty-twenty-seven. If you look at twenty-twenty-eight, we have a seven-hundred-thousand-dollar bond payment that we have no savings for yet. So our plan, when we had this initially presented to us by Stifel, Nicholas, which is a finance firm, we ran all the numbers and it was keeping, it was actually reducing all of our expenses over the next five years to try to carry over some money to cover that seven-hundred-thousand dollars. So you guys can, can, I'm not saying you can't, I mean, you can do this if you want, but I am telling you, we don't have this money now and it will be a serious problem. And the three positions that we have open now are two part-time positions and one full-time position. Those part-time positions make less than fifteen dollars an hour and are not going to save you enough to cover this increase in the Director's salary. And I'm not trying to just be difficult, this is a concern.
I have a concern because we, the board, were informed by the previous Executive Director that we did absolutely have additional budget in twenty-twenty-four and we were using that for legal expenses that were unexpected.
We were told that.
So we were told that in writing from the previous Director.
Well, we're, we're without an Executive Director for months, so there's got to be some savings from that. It's fifteen thousand dollars.
And we also hired a lawyer that's much more expensive than the.
Call for questions.
I'm just, I mean, I'm your Director of Finance and I'm just bringing this up. I have no problem with, that we hired a new lawyer. My job as your Director of Finance is to explain the position as it is and give you advice on what we need to do in the future.
We understand, Mary, thank you, thank you, we get it. We need an Executive Director to take the budget and rework it, that's what we need. We need a new Executive Director, we need ASAP.
I think we also need to be very physically responsible. So I, this was a lot of extra information and the previous information that we had and what's on the table right now. Until we get that person in and until they prove that they can rework the budget or make any changes to keep the library financially sound, as we are legally bound to do, I would revise my motion to the, to my original motion of the thirty-eight to forty-two dollars an hour with the benefits packet and keep it there for now to go forth with the budget we have agreed for to this year and look forward to good changes in the future. So my motion is the thirty-eight to forty-two dollars an hour with benefits package at this time.
You, you put it at forty-three, Janice?
I said thirty-eight to forty-two, I'm revising my motion to the thirty-eight to forty-two at this time to be in accordance with the budget we have previously authorized and with the benefits packet. And with, hopefully, great room for, for positive changes in the future. But for now, to be physically sound to our constituents, I'm, I'm saying the thirty-eight to forty-two per hour is my motion.
The second amended motion is back to the thirty-eight to forty-two range, current benefits, correct? Trustee Brazil, do you still second the, no amended?
No, I, I, I mean, every dollar an hour, it's two thousand eighty dollars a year is the difference. And, you know, I don't, I don't think it's going to make that much difference, you know, a buck here, you know, one dollar an hour here or there.
Okay, so there's.
So I'm, I'm okay with forty to forty-three.
Okay, so Diana does not second, so do we have a second on the motion of thirty-eight to forty-two dollar range? Here, no second motion dies, would someone else like to make a motion?
Motion thirty-eight to forty-three, as we discussed, as Janet first proposed. And then we hear recommendations in next meetings on how to meet the budget.
All right, so John has made a motion for the thirty-eight to forty-three, so an increase.
And that doesn't mean we have to hire them at forty-three, we probably won't.
Yeah, so.
I understand, I can do my best to.
All right, so the range currently in motion is the thirty-eight to forty-three dollars, which is a one-dollar high-end potential range at current benefits. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All right, any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, we can move to roll call votes, Trustee Garrity?
Aye.
Trustee Hagan?
Nay.
Sorry, I need to get my alphabet right there. Trustee Brazil?
Aye.
Trustee Hernandez DeCarl?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, so back to our agenda, we've had our timeline, our process, our salary review. Is there anything that we had not discussed that the trustees would like on the Executive Director's search process?
Can I just, as a member of the public, you got interrupted by discussion, you were talking about hiring freeze. John, I think you were requesting it to be added to the.
It wasn't on the agenda, yeah, I would request that we, I, I think hiring freeze is an option. When organizations that are running over budget, first thing they look at is staff, because it's the biggest part of our budget. What I would say is hiring freeze is an option, I'd love to hear recommendations on how you're going to keep us on budget. We assume that you guys are doing that, you're the interim, interim Director, I would love to hear your thoughts on how we stay on budget.
We're, we're doing the best we can, I've been in this position for two weeks and I would like to gently, I would like to gently remind you that us and the Administration III team are currently doing our best to cover all the responsibilities of Executive Director. In no way is the information that we provide trying to be disrespectful. We're just doing our job as our, your advisors, this is solely your decision, your responsibility, and we respect that. So I can say that we can work on the budget, but I, I, I can't promise to have that verity by next week. I really can't right now with our other responsibilities, I'm sorry. I strongly advise against a hiring freeze, it, it's just for staff morale overall. If they hear that we're doing that, what is that kind of message going to send to the staff?
It's going to tell them that we're not going to budget any.
And we currently have the positions posted and we're about to start interviews. So we already have candidates that apply for these positions.
I would, I would say this is not, this is not on tonight's agenda.
It's not on the agenda, so.
So, would you like something to be added to the agenda for February?
I believe that would be more appropriate.
What would you like to be added to the agenda for February?
I would love to hear from the interim Director recommendations for bringing the budget back in line, and maybe you can help.
We, we vote on a budget every year, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
We're currently on budget, my, my suggestions were simply to keep in mind for when we hire an Executive Director higher than that, which that when they get hired, of course, they can look at the budget and adjust it as needed. It was simply just, just a reminder that we do have these overall expenses. And when you hire a Director, of course, they can look at this and make adjustments as they would like to. I, I'm not sure if it's responsible of me, as, you know, I am the interim, of course, to give you a budget revision at this time, when the new acting, when the new Director comes on board, they may have to do another one. It's up to you, of course, I'm happy to get that.
Look, Dana, I, I, no disrespect, and I know you're in this job temporarily, you've done a lot of other duties, but you report to us.
Yes, I do.
Your priority is to us, not other things at the library, okay? If we ask for something, we really need you to make it a priority. And, and the issue is, if we have a four-million-dollar budget and we can't stay on budget for fifteen thousand dollars, that's really disgraceful, we should have contingency in our budget, and we, it sounds like we don't.
I, I think this needs to be tabled until next month's meeting, I think this discussion needs to be.
So what I'm asking for is that be on the agenda. Well, she started talking, so I had to address it.
I understand, I understand.
What, what agenda title do you think is appropriate for the?
Budget, budget alignment, budget realignment.
Budget alignment, realignment, perfect. So can we please add that to our February public meeting, open meeting?
And just approach, I, I, so you can prepare for this. What if, worst-case scenario, we hire somebody at forty-three an hour, just think about that.
I understand.
That's the problem statement, I don't think we will, but that's the problem statement.
But I, it's also a bit on us, John, that problem, because we're the ones who went through the vaginums piece by piece and authorized. So I think that would be on us also to look at where we think savings. This is not just on the temporary Executive Director, this is on us for authorizing the budget as it stands now. Their comments are operating within the guidelines we gave them. So I think we need to assume responsibility to look line item by line item also, or have our questions ready to, to collaborate to make any changes in the budget.
Yeah, and, and I think that as we start to fine-tune the hiring process, you know, we should be paying particular attention to the financial stewardship of the new Executive Director, because it's unacceptable that you are given this piece of information that there's going to be a significant shortfall of hundreds of thousands of dollars and the staff are told a different story, like, we need to make sure.
That everyone, that everyone is hearing the same thing.
Absolutely, is there anything else to add to the February agenda? Or my next question would be, when are we going to need to meet next based on our new timelines and the job postings? Are we comfortable next week to not meet on Executive Director hiring?
I wouldn't think we have to, since we're, we're just going to have it posted by Thursday, I would think we could take a week or two off.
Okay, so if there's nothing else for, that needs to be added to future agendas or meetings, planned for future agendas?
I would just, I would just say if you run into any roadblocks, Mary, on posting or whatever, just reach out to the President and hopefully, we don't have to have another meeting, but.
Please let us know if anything comes up that we can.
Oh, yeah, so we just, so we just increased it a dollar, is that?
Just one dollar.
Which is fine, but before, just as a note, before we hire, and, and right now, we're out of policy, but, so before we hire, we'll have, need to amend that policy.
Can we add that to the agenda, please, for the current?
Thank you.
All right.
On that, what did you say about the meetings, I didn't catch what you said, are we?
I was asking if we needed another meeting on the Executive Director hiring process or if we're comfortable that next week we are not meeting on the Executive Director hiring process.
I think we're good.
Okay, are you meeting again before the regular meeting? Because you can set that date now and that would save time scheduling in, in February.
It's not on the agenda to discuss tonight, per se.
Okay, I'm sorry, you just brought up meetings.
Other meetings and email, so.
Okay.
We will continue the discussions, not deliberations, though. All right, hearing no further discussion, I do greatly appreciate everyone's time. I know it's hard to be after long workdays and on your Friday nights hanging out, doing this. So, do appreciate everyone's time and effort, and we'll move to your.